The actions walk around the.
Call for an order of five to 11:00 in the meeting. February twenty eighth, one four two. Called the meeting to order, five oh three. Start out with appearances. We have Jose Leon. About the Cable TV Commission and broadcast of meetings. Jose, stand up before you.
Hello, so my name is Jose Leon. Sorry, I recorded the last meeting. I'm here basically to request a council member to step down from the Cable TV Commission to make room for a citizen member. I don't know what goes on on the Cable TV Commission. I don't think anything goes on on the Cable TV Commission, to tell you the truth. So that's basically what I'm here for. I've applied to be on the Cable TV Commission. I do have many years of experience in television, cable television, well, not especially, but cable television and video production. And I did livestream the football games the last two years for the high school football, and we've averaged over eight hundred views on those games. And we got a lot of views on last week's meeting. And I just think that there's, there needs to be something that goes on there with the Cable TV Commission. And quite honestly, I don't know what goes on. I haven't been able to find out if anything goes on. So that's, that's basically why I'm here. So I would request that one commission member step down from their commission, make room for a citizen member.
Go ahead, Miles. I spoke with Jose. I just wasn't sure. I didn't have the right information to give him about it. I don't know if we had to change our charter or, you know, for that cable commission. I don't know what, I mean, I'm sure somebody's wrong. I don't think it's a bad idea. I don't know how the cable commission is set up. I didn't have the exact answers. I don't know if they could change. It takes three readings? Or did you have something to add to that?
I don't, I don't have it in front of me, but typically all of the commissions are set up by ordinance, so it would require a reading, you know, if you're going to change the number of members. But right now, the cable commission is the council, and that was done several years back. I think there was a lot of conflict on that commission for a period of time, and the council just took it over. And it has been very inactive. You guys haven't met at all for quite a while. I think there may have been a meeting to talk about the franchise. You might have just voted for it or something after the franchise agreement in the past couple of years. But other than that, I think that we should take a look at this if we want to consider adding another member, or if we just want to have a conference.
My, my understanding was that the commission needed to have seven members on the commission. And currently, seven members are sitting right there, so.
Is that just for, like voluntarily, is that action that can be taken at six o'clock meeting, or is that something that we should discuss more?
I recommend that you just refer to a committee, then you can for sure have the language in front of you and know what you're talking about.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Public affairs. Let's say public affairs. All right. Appearance number two of Luanne Lundberg, the Conflict of Interest Matters.
My name is Luanne Lundberg, four ten Fourth Avenue, Two Harbors. I've lived in Two Harbors my whole life. I went to school here. I've worked in both the public and private sector. I'm a past member of Rotary, Board of North Shore Horizons, and Ski Trail Board. And I've also been a city band member for many, many, many years. And as a former band member, I was excited and happy to give a donation to the Friends of the Band Show for their new Performing Arts Center. But I recently found out that Garage Starts, Chris Swanson Company, was hired and paid to fundraise, and that Swanson served as a mentor to the young people who worked for him. In the end, I, I understand very little money was raised. And now I found out that Swanson himself is being mentored by a convicted felon and a con artist from Las Vegas, Mr. Oh. It sends me to think that even one dollar of the donations that went to Garage Starts may potentially get into the pocket of a scammer and a con artist. I see this as a pattern of behavior we're seeing a lot of lately. There are many things to be concerned about, but in the interest of time, I will be summary. Number one, I think Chris uses his title of mayor to promote his business projects. Number two, his eight businesses, as documented in various places, including his website and Twitter account, frequently blur the line of mayor and business owner. His businesses are currently being looked into by the Minnesota State Auditor. Three, he teamed up with Mr. Oh, a felon and con man. Four, the Tall Ships Festival debacle. Five, his Burlington Bay underwater hotel project with the infamous Mr. Oh and the subsequent Eighth Wonder on Lake Superior, LLC. And six, cryptocurrency and a city coin that Swanson says he'll use to generate revenue to, quote, "mine more city coins and embed Web three into the foundation of my town." And all this is happening while I feel he created a toxic work environment for the staff at City Hall. But I don't have time to elaborate, and all of it can be found in the good reporting of the Duluth News Tribune and the Duluth Monitor. So what I'd like to really say is this. I believe the mayor has exhibited a pattern of behavior that shows a stunning lapse in judgment, to put it mildly, on multiple fronts and going way back, for which he is completely unapologetic and shows no signs of understanding or remorse. I can only conclude that this behavior will continue with more collateral damage to the city. Chris, I feel you've disgracefully disqualified yourself as mayor. I believe you've done lasting damage to the reputation and morale of the city. And I think the city employees deserve better. I think the city council deserves better. The city band deserves better. And I think all of the citizens of this city deserve better. For these reasons, and in light of the ongoing investigations, disclosures, and reporting, the citizens of Two Harbors must consider and explore the necessity of a recall petition to remove you from office. Two Harbors needs and deserves a transparent, dedicated public servant, not a secretive, self-serving businessman. There are other gifted people in this community that are not your family, your friends, and your employees. Thank you.
Appearance number three, Paul Everson, the Study of the Conflict of Interest Allegations.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll keep it brief. After the presentation by Attorney Costley two weeks ago, I'm here tonight just to ask the city council to use legal representation, either their own in-house or contracted, to investigate and provide a written opinion of any violations of the city code of conduct by the mayor in regard to City Code two point six one, the Code of Conduct and Ethics, and also investigate and provide any written opinion of any violations of the city charter and/or state statutes. Thank you.
And appearance number four, Craig Guzzo, access to golf course and curling club, and fiscal disparity tax on commercial property.
Well, first of all, I'll try to keep mine pretty brief here. It looks like we've got a lot of stuff going on, so first of all, I guess I'd like to thank all of you for trying to take on the service of being city councils or whatever. What's going on in the world right now? I mean, I don't know. Anybody wants to be in Congress, in city council, civil board, county commissioner, anything, whatever. I mean, I look here and just even the turnover that we've had, city administrators or whatever, even from the topic that I'm going to talk about here, it looks like we're going to have to interim city administrators, so we'll have another city administrator. So that'd be three city administrators in the time that I've owned the property over here and stuff, so. But anyhow, yeah, thank you for your service and stuff. It looks like we got a lot on the plate or whatever, so I'll just try to keep it. I guess a couple things on the, I've had some discussions and stuff like that. But sometimes, you know, like I say, as a businessman or whatever, I've been a businessman and got into all just construction projects and a lot of times I get approached, you know, how come you're doing something over there? Well, there's been things like, well, we don't know if we're going to keep the golf courses and a lot of other issues. And like I say, if I open something up or get something there, I don't want to just open for eighteen months or something like that. But the access goes back to, you know, things like when we did the advancement on the campground and whatever, we were supposed to possibly be getting left-hand turn lanes and right-hand turn lanes or whatever. I think we got a right-hand turn lane into the campground, but we didn't get the left-hand turn coming in from the east or from the Silvay direction. But I think for the danger, and I think I forgot if I got that right, somebody could correct me, but I think we had a motorcycle accident there a few years ago where a lady got killed coming by the campground or something. Knows that, but I think it's important. And I know we've got the project where the DOT is coming through in twenty-five, and my understanding is they're pretty hard to work with, but if we put together whatever plan, we're going to put together whatever. I guess what I'd like to see, and because it sounds like, you know, it's a pretty big plan, I mean, we're probably looking for, I don't know, what, thirty, forty, fifty years. Would it be nice like either at our community center or our library or something where we could, you know, draw it up like we got and then either, you know, with technology and everything that we've got, like in three D, or so we can really see through it or whatever. But I'd like to press forward, obviously, for a right-hand lane coming from two hundred yards to the east of the golf course, all the way to Highway Two, and obviously a left-hand turn lane coming from Highway Two all the way, at least to the, to where the golf course property is. I think it'll help for traffic, because I think some people are aware that, right now with the other issue, which is the access from Eighth Avenue coming down, which I still, I just still like or whatever, and I'm not a philanthropist at this point in time or whatever, so I've been approached that I should just donate that or do that, but the traffic, a lot of times comes in there, they drive into the golf course, and they speed through there about thirty miles an hour or whatever, so we've got a danger thing there. And even if I end up developing the property there or whatever, I don't need cars driving thirty miles an hour through that way or whatever. So if we make it like, and there's no, no water, no sewer, no anything, so basically we don't have to do much for it there. And then maybe we can get the speed limit down to like, well, we could post it at like five miles an hour, maybe the people will drive fifteen miles an hour through there. But the other important part about it is, is if I end up developing it, you know, we've had several events or whatever over at the curling club and the golf course or whatever and the park on the property that we have over there, that's fine, but like even if I develop it and, or somebody else develops it and all of a sudden we need more parking or it's nice to work with your neighbors or whatever, so that maybe we could, you know, park over there also, and then maybe I was thought up by the arena with that area there or something, maybe there'd be like even some steps or something that would come down, maybe even eventually, I guess, a handicap thing too or whatever for possible parking if we have something else. I guess I'd just like to get it out there again that, you know, like I say, we're in the, you know, come to all these meetings and stuff, and they have a few meetings, but we have a lot of people that are older that either snowbirds or leave a little bit in the winter, so it's hard to get to a lot of meetings and stuff. So anyhow, I guess going forward, I just keep it short here now, because I already started talking too long, whatever, but I'd like you to visit it or whatever, and I still think that, I get approached all the time, and I, I did put sand piles there and I took them all this year, but I never get any support. I went to the, there's another change too, the, even the curling club presidents have changed like in the last, I don't know, we've had probably three different ones, so they never even bring it up or whatever yet. I have curlers approach me that they would like, if the golf members, they approach me on it, even people when I go to the arena sometimes approach it for, I don't know, leaving the arena that way and stuff like that. Anyhow, I guess I'll just keep it short and hopefully that we can talk about it and maybe gain some ground on it, so. Thank you.
All right. We'll move on to administrator updates.
Thank you, Council President. On the agenda, consent agenda item number fourteen, which is calling for a feasibility report for the two thousand twenty-two sidewalk improvement project. We're doing this because we are following the four twenty-nine process. The four twenty-nine process ensures that we follow this assessment process very closely. So we're asking for the council to call for the feasibility report. Jim Gilbert has been working with Public Works Committee with Ward Two, trying to figure out those sidewalks. So at the March fourteenth meeting, the council then would call for a public hearing for March twenty-eighth, and we'd send out those notices, and we'd go over the two thousand twenty-two sidewalk project. And then the council would also receive a copy of the feasibility report and then order the improvements. And then hopefully on the twenty-eighth, if the council is agreeable to the project, then they would, at that time, award the bid to the contractor. So that's one of the items that we've been working on, and again, that's number fourteen on the consent agenda. Then we have been busy with Brian Golden and Shannon on the PFA loan for the wastewater treatment plant project. We have new business item number four. This is a resolution laying out the financial obligations for the wastewater treatment plant project. And I don't know if anybody had any questions on that resolution, but it does lay out the revolving loan, which is about twelve point six million dollars. We are receiving a WIF grant for roughly around three point six million, then PSEC grant for five point eight, and then special appropriations for eleven point five. And in that resolution, there's item number three, which lays out what PFA was looking for is the transfers from the sewer fund and the capital improvement contribution for, from the electric fund for the electrical portion of that project, and that's roughly about four point eight million dollars. And what that does is offsets the increases that the city would have to do to fund this project. If anybody had any questions.
To me, it seems fairly thorough. I don't have questions at this time.
I think it is.
Attorney updates.
Nothing else. We can six o'clock.
City clerk and HR updates.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a few items, requests for changes to the agenda. So the first one will be to remove from the consent agenda item number eight, and that's a request for the gas, water, and sewer superintendent for some travel. They've canceled that trip due to illness. The second one, I'd like to add to the consent agenda, authorizing the appointment of Shane Sweeney as a temporary employee at the liquor store. Third, I'd like to add, as new business, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute and deliver a memorandum of understanding between the city and Ask Me Local eleven twenty-three regarding vacation time for Rachel Williams. And this was a recommendation of the Personnel Committee from back in October. So it's something that was held off until after negotiations were through and something that we've been aware of. So the Personnel Committee recommended that that be approved. Next, I would like to change the agenda item under minutes, approval of the minutes, which is consent agenda item number one, to just approve the February seventh minutes not the fourteenth. And then, under new business, I'd also like to add, authorizing compensation for city council appointments to the various committees. And you'll see in your packets that I added on your desk, committee appointments. So I'm showing the seven resolutions, one resolution for each of the councilors that authorizes compensation for each of your committee appointments. And several of the committees aren't shown on the resolutions, because if you turn to the second page, a portion of the city code already allows for compensation for certain commissions in committees. So those include public works, finance, personnel utilities, litigation, and public affairs. So that's, that's why you won't notice those on the resolutions that I'm figuring. And do you want me to read those resolutions off, or do you understand what I'm talking about? It's out there on the first page there.
I do, did, councilor.
I haven't sent it to them yet. I just sent them an email saying that I will send it to them between meetings.
Okay.
And then the last thing, or I've got a couple more things I want to talk about, but the next thing is conditions for the special events permit. Miranda and Mr. Costley and I met with Craig Zamborski, the promoter of the Tall Ships event last week, and discussed with him ways to move forward with the event. Mr. Zamborski agreed to make application for the DNR permit on his own. And he submitted a new special events permit application that further outlines details that he's requesting from the city. So in that meeting, we also recognized that there are still things that will need to be worked out between the city and the promoter. So we drafted a document that shows the conditions that will need to be met in order to approve the, the, the application. And Mr. Zamborski has reviewed those conditions and is in agreement with them. So some of those are, I'll just kind of do a brief overview of them, like reimbursement for salaries, fringe benefits associated with law enforcement patrols and for officers from other agencies, reimbursement for salaries outside of the regular work time for the regular police department, reimbursement for rental equipment necessary for the police department, reimbursement for food and beverages that are necessary for the police officers, emergency management, and first responders that are, that are working during that event, reimbursement for salaries, benefits associated with public works outside of their regular work schedules, reimbursement for food and beverage for those folks, reimbursement for rental of equipment including portable toilets and items related to necessary for public works to carry on safety measures. I think those things would be like barricades and cones and all that kind of thing. And then reimbursement for salary, fringe benefits outside of the regular shifts for providing pot of water to the tall ships. And I already discussed with the electrical department, and I don't think there would be any time in addition to their regular time, is that correctly? So those are the conditions that we put on in addition to what he's got. And so if, if, if the council is amenable to those conditions, then staff would recommend approving that, that permit, and then, you know, so we can move forward with the events. Next thing I wanted to talk about is redistricting under, on the agenda, under consent. I've got, item number thirteen is scheduling a public meeting for the purpose of receiving public input on establishing border boundaries in the city of Two Harbors for six o'clock on Monday, March seventh. So that's not necessarily a public hearing, but it's a public meeting where we can gather public input. Carrie and I have been working on the boundary lines, and I think there will be some changes, although not, not too drastic. We're probably within a hundred people on each of the four wards, but the, but the requirement is that you're equal as, as equal as possible. So we would just be moving a few blocks, probably within each of the wards. So I'll have that information available for you next week, what we're proposing, and then we'll have that public meeting on the seventh, for the public to come in and ask questions and address any concerns. It doesn't need to be adopted until the next regular council meeting, which is what, March fourteenth. The deadline, the end deadline is like the twenty, the twenty-eighth of year, last meeting, and we can address it. But I'd rather have the first meeting or the meeting where we attempt to do it on the fourteenth, in case there's anything that comes up that we need to change or any issues. We don't want to wait till the very last day. So that's the schedule that I'm looking at for that. Does anybody have any questions on that? Okay, so that's my intention to move forward with that. And lastly, I will add to the agenda to refer to public affairs, the potential citizen appointment to the Cable TV Commission. That's all I have.
Mr. Chair, I have some more questions.
Yep, go ahead, Ms. [inaudible].
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have one question related to Mr. Zamborski's events permit. And I'm assuming that, that this may be asked or answered during his appearance at our next meeting, but I'm just wondering if Mr. Zamborski is still engaging with first day events at this, for this particular event.
Mr. Chair, I'll answer that, so you know, I mean, that was a big thing, obviously, and I have been assured by Mr. Zamborski the first day events will not be involved in the Tall Ships Festival.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Finance director updates.
Thank you, Council President. We have been continuing to work on our software upgrade project. This is going to probably be about anywhere from eight to, eight to eighteen month project. Carrie Seaver is the project manager for that, and she's done a really great job. We are getting close to having new bills submitted for the utilities, which lays out all of the information. It'll be way more transparent than it has been in the past. And we're also working on, we've, in two thousand twenty, when COVID hit, the utility bills, we took off the penalty and interest portion for the utility bills. And then last year, when there was the gas issue, we decided not to bring that back. We will be issuing a notice to all other customers that the penalty and interest is coming back on sometime in April. But the, everybody should be receiving their notice regarding that. That's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I had a question.
Oh, go ahead.
If I could, hello, hi, guys. I did want, as far as we're talking about, you know, HR updates, and I should have jumped in earlier, but my, my hand raiser wasn't working. As far as where we're at with the finding of a new city administrator, where, where we're at with that process, and while I appreciate the amazing staff that we have and the work that they've done, is, is, can, can we have in the next meeting, an update as far as where they're at with where this process is going, or even maybe they have it tonight or they can email it tomorrow, process of where we're at with getting a new city administrator? And, you know, as far as, as trying to get some more information about how we can make this process happen, because I realize there is an extra salary increase that has happened with the staff while they are taking on the huge duties of being, you know, responsible for the city administrator position. I'm very curious where we're at with replacing our city administrator, and I know I asked about this two weeks ago, and I was wondering if anyone could provide us in the next day or two, or even the next two weeks, what steps have been taken to replace what we have going on with a new city administrator? Thank you.
Sure, Council Redwell. Councilor Glazer was going to give that during. Uh, Counselor Blaser was going to give that during, uh, personnel committee update.
Perfect. I didn't see it on there, so thank you very much.
Sure. All right, Community Development Planner, update?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I just have two items on the agenda tonight under new business, one and two. They're actually joint items, um, with City Attorney Coste, so he's going to discuss those.
Okay.
Any questions for me tonight?
I'm working for handbrake. All right. City Engineer updates?
Evening, Council. Uh, just a couple of items on the agenda tonight. Um, new business number four pertains to the financing for the wastewater treatment plant, which the city administrator covered in her, uh, her report. And then another related item to that is, um, new business number three, which is our invoice for our services during the month of December on the wastewater treatment plant. And in your packet, you'll see that, um, that invoice that's been submitted is consistent with the budget that was approved for our construction services on that project, so, um, should be fairly straightforward, but I would certainly be glad to try and answer any questions you might have. And, uh, that is all I have for the agenda tonight.
Any questions from House? Any other agenda items or additions? Go ahead, Counselor Blaser.
Mr. Chair, I, I guess I don't really, I was just going to, uh, I was going to add the, um, request of Mr. Guzzo, but I see that's already listed here. Um, I, I do have, um, a question regarding the upcoming Capitol Days and, um, if counselors are planning to attend that event. And also wondering, um, because we really haven't gotten a full lot of information from the chamber, but I see there was an email last Tuesday that we received from Janelle, so I was just curious if any counselors are planning on attending. I know we approved that, um, but I was just curious.
I know I would not be, if I had to work.
Mr. Chair, I can speak to that.
Go ahead.
Thank you, if I may, Mr. Chair. Um, I believe that the chamber has requested to, uh, have information about who was going to be attending so that they could make sure that, um, accommodations and as we approved, you know, two weeks ago, uh, any expenditures that may happen, um, would be taken care of. And so I think on the chamber side, they're waiting to see how many and who is going to be attending. And as far as I can think, I think it's four, would be Counselor Blaser, Counselor Erickson, the mayor, and, and myself, Counselor Redwell, who would be attending representing the city, unless there's anyone else who did want to attend. Thank you.
Counselor Erickson, did you have something to add?
I was just going to confirm. Thank you, Counselor Redwell. I will be at the Capitol. Thank you. All right.
All right. Go ahead, Counselor Passy.
Uh, Mr. Chair, the, uh, Public Affairs Committee did, uh, have an ordinance that they were looking at for, for public, providing public input to the council meetings, and that was something that, um, is.
I sent you an email, but maybe you didn't get it. Um, both Miranda and mine notes were that that, um, policy was to be drafted and brought back to the committee, and so the committee needs to meet again before it gets brought to the table. That was my understanding.
All right, if nothing else, I'll look for a motion to adjourn. Oh, did you have something else?
Yeah, I want to go after Eric and just talk from here.
Uh, we prefer to go to the podium.
I guess I forgot to mention the part about the fiscal disparity tax, and it's something that I kind of talked about for quite a few years and it's still pretty confusing, but I was just wondering, are you, uh, counselors aware of fiscal disparity tax for, uh, commercial building owners? We got, uh, if anybody knows.
I'm a little bit familiar with that.
Yeah. Anyhow, Matt Huddles, right now, our accounting commissioner is working on a lot, but, uh, it's something that homeowners don't pay fiscal disparity tax, but right now, the property owners are, fiscal disparity tax that we pay, uh, Lake County, I don't know the number now, but it was, it's up around the $600,000 or something like that, and we send it down to, uh, St. Louis County, and then it goes from there to a board, whatever, they decide to distribute the money. And my understanding is we don't get hardly any of it there, maybe none of it, but anyhow, it's more on a commercial property this year here than what we pay on commercial property to the city and to the, and the county on an individual basis, each of them or whatever. So, and, uh, it was put into law, I don't know, 20 plus years ago, but it's, it sounds like something that, you know, you guys have a lot on your plate, but maybe like you say, through the city administrator or something, uh, we need to attack that or whatever and get rid of it or whatever, because the money, I mean, if you buy a building in town here or whatever, obviously the taxes should be staying here and not going, uh, to the other colonies and stuff, so I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Chair.
Um, thank you, Mr. Guzzo, for sharing that. Um, I did talk with Lake County not too long ago about this, um, because I, I didn't really fully understand what was happening with the, the actual formula of it. And effectively, Cook County and Lake County act as funders to the St. Louis County, as you said, board that basically then distributes that tax money. Um, they've tried fixing it on a couple of different occasions, and it has never been able to be fixed through, through the legislature. Um, but, uh, there was, Matt didn't indicate that he could do it, but he said there was some people that were fairly interested in, you know, going down and kind of lobbying to get that fixed. Um, so maybe that's something, uh, can put you in touch with the legislatures and, and if you, I mean, you've already talked with them about it, I'm not sure, but, uh, that might be a good thing. Thank you.
Yes, Counselor Passy.
Different topic, uh, the council committee appointments. I was going to wait till the, uh, council meeting to bring this up, but the, the city code does allow for multiple counselors to be appointed to committees and actually requires it on some committees, and that is not reflected in the new business.
Yeah, I had a question. I saw that, that, because some of them, there's like three members of the council, I think, public safety, um, yeah, so there's some different ones where, and then there's a, what is it, a motion to change that? There can be no citizen appointed, but you still can have council members.
Correct. DETA actually requires two council members.
Mr. Chair, that is addressed, well, I think if there are two council members appointed to that committee, well, Jackie's on it, but I think it's through us, she's appointed by the mayor. That's not showing on here.
The mayor cannot appoint citizen members. The council president needs to appoint council members.
I do appoint council members, or I did appoint this council member to the, uh, I was trying to remember, DETA needed two council members. We could definitely check on. I see that. Counselor Erickson? Do you have something?
I don't have a question related to this, but I have a question related to an agenda item before we adjourn.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Chair, we're going to talk about the makeup of committees and the appointment of committees and the process when we get to the regular meeting.
Counselor Erickson, what was your question?
Uh, my question was related to unfinished business number five, and it may have been, uh, a meeting that I didn't attend in January, but I don't know anything about the, um, separation of THDF from the council.
Counselor Erickson, I think that that's also something the attorney is going to bring up at six o'clock, under his presentation.
You can talk about it now, I can talk about it at six, you tell me.
Well, I guess I just, it was under unfinished business, as has been discussed before with a recommendation. I, I just hadn't seen it before.
It rightfully should be a new business. You're correct.
Okay. Thank you. I just, I didn't, I just wanted to make sure I hadn't missed anything, so, thank you.
Go ahead.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. So, um, I guess with regards to my question regarding Capitol Days, um, the counselors and the mayor that are participating in Capitol Days, I'm curious as to, um, have any, uh, who wants to, who we would like to speak with and what our agenda is as we go down to Capitol Days. Don't like to go not knowing what, where we all are at. Um, there was, uh, some information that, um, I heard that the, that Senator Bach was introducing a bill with regards to our wire for property, and I know that this would probably be something that we would want to discuss with our legislators, but again, this isn't something that we have, um, had the opportunity to discuss together as a group. So I have a few more questions than answers with regards to that. So wondering if there's a possibility for those people that are going to Capitol Days to get together and, um, form some kind of a cohesive plan.
Um, it would have to be a special meeting.
I know, that's why I'm asking now, so, um, could we post something for Thursday, later in the week, Thursday, we could do it? No, happy Friday. Mr. Chair. Go ahead. Absolutely. I would, I would love to meet, and I, I love that, that Counselor Blaser wants to get together and, and get a sort of a playbook put together, and I think that would be great before we head down to Capitol Days that we do meet, and I can probably do Thursday, and, um, let's see what we can make happen from there. That would be great.
Go ahead, Ms.
I just want to put my concerns in that I think you guys should, uh, I, I'd like to see housing as something that you go, guys go down and lobby for, just, right? If I don't go, I may end up going actually, you know, with, you know, bum legs, you have no good time, so, uh.
Yeah, you'd be great lobbying for the Capitol.
But yeah, I just think that's one of our council priorities is housing, so.
Yep.
I'd like to see that as one of the topics.
Mr. Chair. Yeah, since we're in a public meeting, I'm, I fully agree, you know, we can, I would love to see us focus on housing. You know, it was our number one priority when we came in through the fall, and I think we gotta talk with our legislatures about it. I'm sure we're not the only town talking about that, but, you know, utilities, infrastructure, what can we do, we need to get that going.
And I think it's important for, Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, uh, I just think it's important for us, um, as a group to continue to thank our representatives down there for, um, their support with our wastewater treatment plant and our water treatment plant, because without those dollars, we wouldn't be doing the project that we're going to be starting here shortly, well, exactly, it'll be started, but it'll look more like it started in a few months. So, um, I guess, Patty, how soon could we actually do something? We can't do it Thursday, can we? Because today's done.
We're going Monday.
Friday or Monday.
Maybe Tuesday.
We'll, we'll get something posted, and, um, I'll connect with Jackie and Kathy after the meeting, so we can hopefully get something posted. I'm thinking so, I think Monday. Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Yep, thank you, Rob. All right, seeing nothing else, I'll look for a motion to adjourn. So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.